Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting, July 25, 2018. Commissioner Lundey?
Our inspirational word, use every chance you have for doing good.
I get the dog today. He's extremely friendly. He's available for adoption today, so he'd be a great dog to have at home. And our kennel only has 12 dogs in it. We adopt at nine out on Saturday, which is wonderful. So stop by our kennel today, talk to our dog warden. He said our goal is for our event we're having next month is to have no dogs to adopt. So stop by and see us. Come on bud, come on.
Too bad they don't poop.
Under Resolutions Number One, investment?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Proporation?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. I do have a number of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with the Board. Potential hires that with the Commissioners Department, the Visitors Bureau of Dog and Kennel, solid waste. So I'd like to have conversation concerning positioning this summer, getting ready for negotiations later in the summer. We really haven't had that talk, keep bringing up, but we never seem to get there. Pending legal matter and sale of real estate. All issues are allowed under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've identified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved away the reading of the Amendment of 18?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve change orders for the courthouse building renovation project, change order on Number 11 to Moser Construction, various requirements for the fire department, remove shelves, add window dome, round stone edging, and credit for the asphalt sealing. That total change order is $1,795. And change order to R.M. Regal Enterprises, Inc., change three upright sprinkler heads to a concealed style, $525.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Little cleanup stuff, Mr. Cordez?
Yes, I can explain briefly. Since 30,000 is a large number, I think it needs explanation.
No, we're on 10 right now, the change order, finishing up the courthouse building.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at all the change orders together, my apologies.
Not a problem.
There's debt is mop up on those. There may be a few more. We're closing out the accounts, you know, a couple dollars here, a couple dollars there. Some of them are credits, some of them are debits. I just want to put that project completely to bed and to rest. So you may see a few more in the coming weeks, but they won't be for significant money.
Have we heard anything from the Adult Probation Department in regards to how it's going over so far?
No, if I never hear from them again, that means everything's going well.
Okay.
I'm happy to report, I haven't heard anything. So I think everything's just fine.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to Boil and Cool Home for Pianos, Lorraine, for In-Nigen Veteran Robert Kimberly Sayers, Overland and Corns with ORC 5901.25.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve change orders for additional work at the Burns Road Annex, EnviroCom Construction, which is general contractors, change order number three, painting drywall doors, frames, locks, carpet, and countertops, $30,480.77. Ross Builders Plumbing Contractor, change order one, to install the faucet strains, plumbing, and restrooms, $1,635. And Firelands Electric, Inc., change order number three, repair uplights in the ground, exterior lights PVC conduit into signs and councils, $670.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you. The back end of 911, where we had to put in the very expensive...
Bomb shelter?
Well, it's, it could be a bomb shelter, it's a tornado shelter. But as far as I'm concerned, it's good for bombs too, it's pretty hefty. And of course, there was sundry work that needed to be done back there with the double backups on the generator and distribution panels. And then that lovely staircase to the roof because Columbia Gas will not access equipment that has a certain incline on there, the ladder, et cetera, et cetera. Anyhow, I want to finish cleaning up that area back there, it wasn't in the original scope of work, have the walls painted. There's still some old stuff from the prior tenants back there, build-ins and so forth. I want all that stripped out now, I want that area completely shelled back there, which will include the painting and the cleaning, and the ripping out of a couple partition walls. And then we'll lay up that back area for other things that we have talked about, that we have studies going on for right now. I just think it'll give a better view of the building. Really think we're going to be launching in September. Backed down on the date a little bit because we're training and making our final connection. I will tell you that everything is up and running over there, and we're running off of that equipment. We've actually transferred onto the new equipment.
Wonderful.
We've been working with the police and fire departments, letting them know when we're picking up new servers and equipment, so that if there's a glitch between going over, they're aware of it. We've been doing it at night, and everything's gone fabulous to date. So just clean up items and it'll make a better building.
September, do we think, still?
Quite frankly, Commissioner, we could have opened the building this month or even last month. There's no urgency to it because I want to, we were going to open it before, start the training, let the public come through, but we really weren't going to use the building. We were going to continue our training and then make our transition over a weekend. So September sounds like a really great time for me, and that gives us a little bit more flexibility. So we'll have a full ribbon cutting, we'll have an event, I want, I really think the public will like walking through this building. You've seen it.
Oh, it's cool.
It is very cool. It's state of the art, the residents overwhelmingly approved that levy, they deserve the best center possible. It has double and triple redundancies going into it. I think they'll be quite pleased, and I'm always amazed by the equipment and the new stuff that's in there, and I hope a lot of people will come out, but we'll have more to come on that.
When we close the other center, we take that piece of equipment we couldn't fix anymore and send to Smithsonian or something?
Oh, the Howl 2000?
Yeah.
It needs to go to the Smithsonian because as we discovered a couple years ago before we, when we really started wanting to build a new 911 Ernest, it could, that was the brain of our 911, it's obsolete, and we only have one, and there's no parts or backup pieces for it anymore. So we've been keeping it a, you know, working with, you know, the old metaphor, bailing wire and chewing gum. So we're pretty well off that. But the new, the backup, since we brought that up, our current center will become our backup center.
Correct.
But it'll be working on the new equipment. So all of that is going to be gone. We won't have state-of-the-art consoles and monitors at the backup, we'll be using a lot of the existing consoles and things that are there. So there'll be less capability there, but there'll be a fully capable, modern backup facility to our primary facility. And I need to point out that there's a lot of piece app that do not have a backup piece app. They go down, they're down. They do not have a backup to locate to. We're fortunate in Lorraine County, and the residents and taxpayers of Lorraine County have demonstrated their support to allow us not only to have a really great state-of-the-art primary center, but also be able to use our current center as a backup center to support our community.
Works out well, thank you.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the airport, approve a green, Richland Engineering Limited for Engineering Construction Services for the taxiway signing and apron lighting, in the amount of $14,000, funded by fiscal year 1800 grant and reimbursed by 95% and 5% local.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Hey, for 700 bucks, we'll get new lighting.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Award contract to Aerie Blacktop, Inc., Sandusky Rehab Taxiway AC and D, in the amount of $1,122,451.05. That includes priorities two, three, four, and five, $983,027.95. Priorities three, four, and five are eligible to receive federal aviation grant funding in the amount of 90% federal share, $884,725.15. 5% state share is $49,151.40. And the local share of 5% is $49,151.40. Remaining priority two, alternate bid one, airport access road to be reimbursed with fiscal year 18, airport entitlement funds, authorized administrator to notify the order to release retained project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez?
Well, you know, this is kind of interesting. You know, it's a lot of money, but we're bringing in 1.15 million for about $50,000, and we do have the funds available. We were, this is new money. We would not allocated this money, but we were able to steal somebody else's money. They didn't get their project moving as best they could, funds became available with the FAA. We were always got our hand out and our hat out, and so we bid this project without any funding. Because one of the nuances on the FAA is that you have to have your project bid before they'll even consider you for supplemental funding. It's really, it's really a terrible system in my mind, because a lot of these vendors, they spend quite a bit of time preparing these bids, and it's effort and work on their part, and they're fine people trying to keep their companies afloat, but they do know going in that we may not get this money, but if we don't do this process, we'll never get the money. So I'm pleased to tell you that there was supplemental funding that became available for projects that weren't completed. We were successful at gaining this money that wasn't expected. I think the airport's always a negative issue with most people, it's unfortunate, but we have to keep it and maintain it, as you well know. And I think the investment is small for the amount of money that's coming back, plus we're leveraging state dollars to take half of, half the burden off of the local government.
Wonderful.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve Carlisle Township 2018 Community Incentive Grant funding in the amount of $12,288.68 to purchase refurbished, renewed playground, flags, advertising, and office supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve Lagrange Township 2018 Community Incentive Grant funding in the amount of $5,055.72 to purchase compost decking to replace the handicap ramp.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve Rochester Village 2018 Community Incentive Grant funding in the amount of $282.71 to purchase storage bin, paper envelopes, and food for Pride Day.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve South Amherst Village 2018 Community Incentive Grant funding in the amount of $5,758.93 to purchase newsletters, postage, paper, towels, picnic table, and signs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I do have one request to the Board that we didn't get to the agenda. It's to authorize job and family services to provide services to, vis a vis, the Boys and Girls Club for clothing for the children to go to school that are below the poverty line. It's about a million dollars, it's a good program, we do one occasionally. This is the time of year it's best to do it, as we're getting ready to go in. I'll pass the resolution down to you. It's for shoes, coats, et cetera. Quite frankly, we know the dire straits of a lot of folks that are receiving TANF SNAP and the likes of different assistance in the community, and I think these children are the ones that need the most assistance. It's pretty hard to go to school and you get a pair of shoes, and you don't have a damn warm jacket to get there. We hope they're educating them with extreme prejudice when they're there, but we got to get them there, and we got to get them there in a safe environment. So I would ask that you would consider...
Casting this at this point though also gives them the opportunity to use that money with the sales tax holiday also, they'll get that extra bonus of six and three-quarter percent of purchasing power.
Well, actually, we should be exempt in this anyway, on the government.
Are we exempt totally on this plan? Okay, wonderful, very good.
So it should be exempt from sales tax, even though we're going through the, they're a nonprofit, and then they're going vis a vis, so we should be able to use our tax-rem status on that. But, good point, I forgot all about this.
Yeah, just because they announced that the other day, so.
It's nice of the state to give away everybody's sales tax without asking us.
Right, they give away our money. I take, they take it, they give it away, whatever they want to do.
Like you're talking about yesterday, I see how they carve out so many things, like what's a forklift?
Oh, you had one. Oh, forklift is a new one in Columbus.
The, I wasn't gonna forget, I was just waiting for it.
We have to do this first, Jim.
I know.
Do you need a reader, can I just make the motion?
You could do whatever you'd like to do.
I like to make the motion.
I'd like to second the motion, if that's okay with the Madam Clerk.
Thank you so much. Any further discussions? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
The motion is carried, approved.
Okay.
Mr. Cordez?
Well, I have a hotter subject. We met yesterday with the Recovery One Addiction Services folks, the Coalition has come together, fine people. I really feel some empathetic people, compassionate people wanting to try to do something in Lorraine County. However, the initial, the initial numbers that we're looking at, and they need to be teased a lot more. The, I think the term they use is unbooked or something like that. It was a new term for me, I was a little mystified. It never ceases to amaze me how consultants come up with some names for things that mean we just got to do more work. But they, the initial numbers are much higher and much more significant than I think any of us had anticipated, based upon the amount of Medicaid reimbursement, the cost of the services, and of course, trying to figure in whether there's going to be a repeal of Medicaid. Now, it was pointed out yesterday, and rightfully so, that both gubernatorial candidates now have, well, one was always there without changing the Medicaid and ex, expansion, sorry, I just lost my thought for a second. The second candidate has recently moved to a disposition of work requirements for the Medicaid expansion piece. Quite frankly, I still think it's Medicaid on expansion, because there are going to be work elements and barriers to receiving those benefits, and we truly know that those kind of things, you drop out a good portion of the population that doesn't meet their requirements. We have that right now on the CEMP, CMEP, whatever we got over at Workforce Development. Sometimes they can't get them from next door to the next door right over, and then get them enrolled. They leave here, they get halfway through the parking lot, instead of going to the next door, they leave. So I believe there's probably going to be at least a 25% reduction in the expansion through certain barriers that may be there. I'm not going to argue the point whether they're necessary, not necessary, this isn't, this isn't my conversation for this morning. So we have to figure in a certain amount of repeal. 75% of the people that we will be probably serving at this center are under the Medicaid expansion, we know that. Most of the Medicaid expansion has been utilized in the addiction, people with addiction, people that for various reasons are not working, they wouldn't normally be eligible under the old standards, they're usually single, there's no one, usually no children in the home, et cetera, et cetera. So that means that the potential for people to be served that may not be covered with Medicaid because the expansion becomes more difficult for them to get coverage, the numbers go up. I hope I've explained that well to you, the Commissioners were in the meeting, they didn't talk to each other, sat at each other at the other end of the rooms, no decisions were made, but, so that's concerning. Therefore, additional dollars have to be planned for, because there's, it's a moving target, and there's a ton of uncertainty. And the other piece, as I said, was the services are going to be much more expensive. Residential services are not reimbursed by Medicaid, period. And those services need to be incorporated into part of the whole mosaic of services. Commissioner, you looked a little...
Residential is covered by Medicaid.
It's the...
As long as they're receiving certain services.
But there's a big component of the residential, remember they were talking about the need for self-sufficiency and the apartment-style setting, those services are not reimbursed, they're not, they're not actually considered a medical service, and that's the problem. Plus, certain amount of the drugs for detox, some are covered, but a lot of them are not.
Like the Benetrol.
Correct. So we ran into a situation there. I thought the group out of Cincinnati, they did a nice job. Was a little slow in getting us the numbers, we had one of them weeks ago, but it took them, I think they worked at it very, very well, but we're behind the eight ball. So what does that all mean, and what am I talking about, why am I babbling on and on? I know Commissioner Kelo wasn't there, so that's what he's wondering, you guys aren't because you were there.
Three hours.
Three hours. We need, we need to do a couple things. First, we need to get, we need to expand our look from the Auditor's Office at millage, higher millage. And I say you need to put it on a levy for higher millage, I just think we need to open the window, we're waiting on additional data from this group, but I can tell you that for the most part, I believe the numbers that we've already asked to be certified are inadequate, if you want to do something. That's number one. Number two, I don't have those numbers back from what we sent back two weeks ago. We absolutely have to be at the Board of Elections on August 8th by close of business to be on the ballot. We're, it's tick-tock, folks. So we need to, if we're going to ask for additional millage certification, it needs to be done today, and then we need to call downstairs and make sure we get it back quickly. And hopefully, we'll get further numbers. I have some data that'll indicate where we need to go, but it's not mature enough yet, and they're still working on that data. That's really all I have to say right now, until we get a better set of numbers. But the set we have indicate that the ask that we put on the ballot is going to be insufficient to do what they believe needs to be done.
I also have Lisa running some numbers for what it costs us as far as utilities and things of that nature when we were up and running for Golden Acres, so I don't think any of that was part of the scenario.
It wasn't part of the numbers, that's part of that, the numbers being immature, the operating numbers. You know, it's little things that people don't think about. You're required to have maintenance contract on the elevator, they run about 25, 30,000 a year. Put an elevator in, figure you're going to have 30,000 or 40,000 of dead cost. You've put a fire suppression system, you got to figure out the, kind of a contract for the testing and servicing of the fire suppression. The list goes on and on. People walk into a commercial building, especially a large building, or a building that's singly purposed, that has a lot of specific specialized requirement on it, they don't recognize that you immediately have a huge amount of operating cost.
Like you mentioned, the windows yesterday being historic.
Right. So it's, I think some of their numbers are a little high on one end, you know, especially the capital and things like that. I wasn't worried about that, because we can push down hard on that number. But I wasn't considering that in the complete numbers. And also, I was looking at that as debt service, because I would believe we would probably bond that out. These folks mean well, they really, really do. I've enjoyed being part of the group. It's not moving as quickly as I would want it to move. Maybe they need to move a little slower than this. I can't tell you, but we're not experts in this field. I can tell you about buildings, facilities, grounds, operations, all that, but I cannot tell you about what these people need, how to give it to them, what the services cost. This is the end of the pool I drowned in, I don't do this. So we have to have these people, we have to rely upon them, and their timing is different than what our timing is. We have demonstrated to them with a certain amount of great urgency to do something, we continue to demonstrate to them that there's a great urgency. I think they recognize that, but they move in a different timeframe than we do. I hope that's the way I fairly said. But here's a list. Commissioner Lundey had this run this morning from Budget Department on different ask. I would suggest we put them all on.
Yeah, there's, you know, I, they were investing substantial dollars to really drill down as far as, you know, what kind of staffing is going to be required, how much staffing is going to be paid. I mean, you know, a lot of drilling down. The unknown is the Medicaid expansion, what impact that's going to have. You know, there's some projections of 40% to 60% maybe reductions in the Medicaid reimbursement. But I think for the sake of having, being able to make a sound and wise decision moving forward, we need to look at some other rates here, projected millage. And so based upon some of the discussions that have been held, I guess I would say that we probably need to look in the area of .60 mills to .75 mills, somewhere in there, and make that request to the Auditor's Office. I've had a quick conversation with the Auditor's Office about the timeliness of everything, and the indication is if we can get the information down to them, that they'll move on it quickly so that we would be able to make a decision by the first of August.
I think it's not really hard to certify the millage, they're busy down there, but I believe they'll, they'll be able to do that. Let me also suggest that we remind folks that the ask may be bigger, because we don't know what's going to happen with that expansion. And the worst thing to do is get something up and running, a year from now, we're out of capital, we're out of operating capital. That could be a real problem. I will tell you, the initial numbers indicated that there would be, you know, an operating deficit over reimbursement of about, without capital expenditures, of about 15 million dollars over five years. And that's without rollback, changing anything with Medicaid expansion. And so you'll have to add a factor of the Medicaid, decreasing in the Medicaid reimbursements because of some changes to that expansion, and plus, there was additional operating dollars that I felt was completely missing in that scenario, that needed to be incorporated. And that doesn't include capital for the refurbishing of the building and the things that they believe would need to be done to the building. So that's the take, that's the launchpad number, and then you have to add in all those unpredictable factors. So it starts at about 15 million over five and goes up.
Well, it is, as stated at the meeting, you know, this is a crisis the county faces, and we want to make sure, as the Coalition discussed, that when we do this, we do this right, and because it's too important to our community not to do it right. So I would propose that, based upon the county administrators' observations and our discussions the other day, that we probably need to look at a window somewhere between .60 mills and point-six-oh mills and point-seven-five mills.
And can I add one more thing, Commissioner? Also, this, there was considerable conversation about not being on the ballot this November. I know the urgency's there. We know the urgency's there. Quite frankly, the media knows the urgency's there because they've been very invested in this issue. I've talked to many, many of the folks and the editors, and they're wondering, you know, if, if we're going to do something and when. But this group also believes that there's a potential that we may need to, we may need to wait and not be on the ballot this November. I'm just bringing it up because that's another big topic that's being discussed, and I don't want to wait two more weeks or three more weeks and, you know, actually just introduce that concept, but there was a little bit of hesitation.
Well, I think everybody in the room did acknowledge there's a crisis, as time is critical, and, you know, that this is something that we need to keep moving on and do our, make our best effort to garner community support.
Yeah, I just didn't want us to be criticized that, for doing and having all these conversations, and then come August 8th, maybe a decision's made not to proceed August 8th and wait for the next round of elections. So, I just think we need to introduce that concept. There's a lot of people talking to us out of this coalition that are not as prepared to move forward as we are. I'm not blaming them again. They march to a different tune, a different drumbeat. And so, it's unfortunate it's taking longer than people would like it to, but we're still working at it.
Yeah, everybody wants to make sure everything's, you know, done, done right, but we all want to make sure that it's done right. At the same time, we have a crisis that this county's facing, and we need to continue to move forward, so.
The number of deaths have, seem to have gone down.
It's because of all the work we're doing already.
Exactly.
We're making progress.
And the law enforcement getting all those, you know, killer drugs off the street, the fentanyl and all that. But Elaine said yesterday that there's a new wave of...
Another wave of drugs coming in behind you.
Well, it has already killed people, and then there's something coming from New York that I've heard that Narcan can't bring you back from, so, I mean, this is just a scary time right now.
It's going to continue. You know, I thought it was, I thought it was damaging to the overview of our community when we were designated for additional law enforcement.
The hider.
The hider. And we had more federal presence here, and, you know, we have a big presence here, as we know, and we're not, we can't talk much more about that, but we're aware of what's going on. We get briefed occasionally what's going on. Now, we're an SOS community. Soon, what are they going to do? They're going to put, you know, caution tape up across Route 90 coming into Lorraine County? Can't have that. We just can't. These are not good things. They're bringing services here, yeah. I'm happy for the services. I'm unhappy that we need the services. So, we need to do, everybody needs to do something. We're trying to do something, but we can't do it alone because this is not, this is not the, where we operate. We need our partners. But I just think that people are unaware. The problem is getting beat down a bit because we have additional boots on the ground, additional resources. Some of it is from education, some of it's from rehab, a lot of it's from law enforcement right now, but you cannot law enforce your way out of this. All right? The war on drugs in this country has been going on. It's the longest-running war in the history of our country, and we lose all the time. Sorry, I just get a little...
I know. Well, like they say, it takes a village, well, actually, it takes a village, a city, a county, and a state to deal with this issue because it's huge and it's affecting everybody, so.
You know, we appreciate the support we've received from the state to this point, but, you know, the bottom line is we still need greater federal assistance, we need greater state assistance on the whole thing. The bottom line is the cavalry is not coming, folks. You know, we have to take care of our own people, our own needs, because we can't rely on waiting for them to come through.
Let's throw this number out there. So, if you don't feel empathy, you don't feel compassion, and you feel like this is a self-induced problem with these folks, and I read too many comments where we shouldn't Narcan them, they should let them die, and the problem dies with them. It's a two-hundred-million-dollar economic crisis in Lorraine County. That is what the experts estimate, estimate that it's a drag on our economy. Two-hundred million. Lost productivity, increased medical costs, increased hospital costs, injured costs, crime, everything. They have estimated it at two-hundred million. I didn't just pull that number out of someplace, the air. There's a report running around out there somewhere with those numbers in it. I can't remember where we...
The coalition.
The coalition, that one. Couldn't remember where I got it. It's there. So, if, for nothing else, if you don't want to be compassionate, you don't want to be empathetic, you don't want to be concerned for your neighbor, be concerned for your own pocketbook.
Yeah.
Because somehow, the people here are paying for that.
Yeah.
Hey? You know, whether they're waiting in the emergency room an extra three hours with their child with a broken arm because they're triaging, you know, overdoses and et cetera, et cetera, or they're going out and their employer has increased workers' compensation cost at their business because they have more accidents from people that are drugged out in the workplace. And it's, they're out there. There's plenty of functioning addicts out there that are causing a lot of damage within the economy. You know, they see the ones that are at the end of the road. There's plenty that are in the middle of the continuum that put a drag on, too.
Well, so, based upon your thoughts and recommendations and, you know, some of the discussions.
I recommend that you expand the window that, so you can make, if you're going to make a decision on April 8th, you have adequate ability to be flexible enough to select the right option. Yes, I do recommend that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And as I had proposed, somewhere in the area, based upon the discussions that were held, probably need to look at point-six-oh to point-seven-five, somewhere in that range.
I would actually just give her the shot and let her put the, give it to Madam Clerk. And she could just...
Teresa has it.
Oh, Teresa. Yeah. So, look at that whole continuum? Is it better if we submit to the auditor a narrower window, or it doesn't matter?
He'll do whatever.
Whatever you're going to do is what we're going to get certified back, and that's what you have to choose then, to be clear.
So, why don't we just...
So, if you go from beginning to end, that's fine. If you just go forward, that's fine. I mean...
Okay, Madam Clerk, we would like to look at point-four-five, point-five-oh, point-six-oh, point-six-five, point-seven-oh, point-seven-five, point-eight-oh, and point-eight-five mills.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
I think I've said enough this morning. Thank you. I yield the counsel.
I do have to bring up a matter not on your agenda. A few years ago, the commissioners authorized us to dispose of old books that were obsolete. We're now exchanging our cellphones with Verizon. They don't want them back, so if the commissioners would give us permission to either, you know, sometimes our victims' witness people can give those away, although I guess it seems hard to give them away. But anyway, we would like a similar permission from the commissioners to dispose of our old cellphones, either by selling them for what we could get or just giving them away.
I'll move. Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Other than that, I do have three matters pending litigation for executive session.
We make up for last week of not having one.
Yeah. You tell Jim how fast we went with him. We set a record.
Well, when I'm not here, you don't work, Jerry, so that's the problem.
No, we get to work done without all the O R rating.
Oh, is that what it is? Is that what it is?
La Celle.
Go ahead.
Commissioners' report.
Well, yeah, we talked about having that meeting yesterday with the coalition. It was a lot of good information going back and forth. And then last night, we all attended, Avon Lake Democrats had a picnic out at their lakefront pavilion there, and Richard Cordray was there, and talked about a calm, cool, and collected guy. I mean, the times right now where everything is so crazy, it's nice to see that calmness with him, so good luck to him in this next election. Other than that, I really don't have anything to report.
County Commissioners Association Governing Board met this past Friday. Some policy, but we had both governor candidates in to speak to us about our legislative agenda and the issues we'd like to have addressed. I was able to stick around. Rich Cordray was there early. Dewine was coming later in the afternoon, but I had to get back from Columbus for another event.
You weren't going to stay from anyway. Who are you kidding?
Yes, I was. I listened every, I might know where he's been going to us in a couple of cases.
We know where you're voting already.
Well, we know where I'm voting. Yeah, that's pretty simple. Rich and I have been friends twenty years old to make a great governor, but, you know, addressing the issues and the needs that, you know, county government has regards to local government funds, the opioid epidemic, of course, how that's going to be addressed, the Medicaid expansion, and just overall services, education, a lot of hot points. Also, Investment Advisory Committee met this week. With interest rates up, our income is going up. It's not going to be like it was in '07 at eight-point-three million, but we might hit two-and-a-half million, the treasurer said.
We're slowly inching up that hill.
Slowly inching up. And then, again, last night, Rich did a great job at the Avon Lake Democrats. It tripled the attendance normally for Rich to be there, and, again, he's just a calming influence. Rich doesn't get excited. He's not a character when it comes to, you know, representing government. He's just cool, calm, collected, thorough. You know, we got a really good job. Also, this week, did a lot of prep in regards to our NAAP conference tomorrow, National Association, the Realtors out of Cleveland Industrial Properties. We're putting a presentation on in regards to the opportunity zones. We're near a hundred attendees now tomorrow. Don's done a great job with his staff, so looking forward to all those people in regards to investment, using opportunity zones, the reinvestment capital gains, making them non-taxable into our targeted areas, so. End of my report.
Just like to start by sending out our condolences to Judge John Marotti, the passing of his mother, former state senator Sumurato and the passing of her mother, and then, I guess, learning today about Councilwoman Sharon Pearson's mother has also passed away, so our condolences go out to them and their families. Was unable to attend the Lorraine County Township Association meeting. There won't be a meeting next month because of the fair, and I think they're working on, I think, is it the executive director, I think, of the Ohio Township Association? They're looking to fill a new position there, supposedly, or one of the top leadership positions. Just want to say a shout-out, I guess, to Joe and Rosa Gee for all the work that they do with Valor Home and also the Valor Home, the Women's Shelter. I know I donated some furniture to them, and I'm thinking somebody's showing up from the Valor Home to pick things up, and who shows up? Joe and Rosa in a pickup truck. So, I got to tell you those...
They're like Tina and Joe's buddies.
They are. They're, yeah, I'm just like, holy cow, I guess I shouldn't be surprised, but, you know. But, yeah, they're just an amazing couple, and they're just so dedicated to helping the veterans in the county, so, yeah, very much appreciated all the work that the Recovery One Coalition's been doing, and, you know, Nord Family Foundation investing a lot of money to make sure that we could really drill down on a lot of numbers, and there are a lot of numbers to be filled in. There's concerns, obviously, about what happens with the Medicaid expansion, so just want to thank them for the work that they've been doing, but as I said, we've got a crisis here that needs to be addressed. And, yeah, the calm and the storm, Richard Cordray, just amazing talk to just a packed lakefront house there in Avon Lake. That's the biggest crowd I've ever seen for that event, and just a lot of people there, and I understand people there. Both party persuasions were showing up to hear him speak, so, but having worked with him in Columbus, and I said a couple of words about that last night, especially when he was Attorney General, went after Wall Street, and especially when Wall Street had taken advantage of some of our pension funds for fire, police, and highway patrol, and Richard went after them as AG and brought back to Ohio two billion dollars. That's with a B. And so, as I said the other night, don't be fooled by his calm demeanor. He's a very smart guy, and believe me, if he is elected to that office, he will get a lot of things done, and good things done, especially for consumers and families. That completes my report.
For representatives?
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
Mayor.
Mayor, come join us.
I am Jim Fortover, Mayor of Vermillion, and I come today without my handout, which is a good thing. I want to actually take a second just to let you know that your, the funds that you often, and the services you often contribute to our communities don't go down a black hole. I want to take, make a statement of appreciation for two items. Excuse me. One is simply the solid waste recycling money that was forwarded our way. I know it's twenty-two thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-seven, I believe, probably not the biggest section of money that's been allocated, but for a size, a community of Vermillion is very much appreciated. In fact, one thing that it helps us do is continue making payments on our street sweeper. It not only keeps our streets clean, but keeps stuff out of the storm drains, and that's a very beneficial piece of equipment in addition to...
Just for record, for the people that tune in, the whole of the city of Vermillion and our solid waste district, not just the portion that's in Lorraine County. A lot of folks don't realize that...
That's correct.
All of Vermillion is actually, even the portion of Erie County or in the Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District.
And vice versa. Erie County Health Department is all of Vermillion, and none of Lorraine County is in Vermillion.
It's a really interesting place you have there, Mayor.
It really is. Dual jurisdiction and... I actually have two offices, one for my Erie County. But again, thank you for that consideration. That goes a long way with us. And secondly, I want to give a lot of credit. I'm, you know, our community's primary goal is economic development. I mean, what community doesn't have that as a goal? But for us, it's critical. I mean, there are no problems that Vermillion have, that has, that cannot be fixed with more revenue, preferably from the business community, which has suffered. So, my message to our staff is always, if anyone shows interest in moving to Vermillion, let me know. And such was the case back in May. A man from, a business owner from Lakewood was thinking about expanding and moving his business to our area. He was looking at Vermillion and surrounding communities. So, I made friends with him, talked to him on a regular basis, took him shopping for property, and in early June, it came down to two pieces of property in his mind, one in Vermillion and one in a neighboring community. And the piece in the neighboring community was less expensive. And he said to me, he said, "Jim, I got to do what's right for me." And I said, "Hold on." So, I called your Lorraine County Community Development Department, Jerry Good, and within twenty-four hours, Jerry was in my office with the business owner, laying out to him the benefits that Lorraine County could provide to him, and coaching me on how to arrange for an abatement that would reduce the cost of his building to the point where it would offset the cost of the property in the neighboring community, who shall remain nameless. And he bid. He said, "Okay." He said, "Here's my letter of intent to the property, and I'm moving to Vermillion." But it could not have been done without the assistance of Jerry Good and the background that your department provides and continues to provide as I pursue this. So, I know we're a multi-county entity, but we really very much appreciate the services provided by Lorraine County Community Development, Jerry in particular, and probably a half dozen other stories of the good that's coming from that department, but I want to just focus on that one. So, that's, so far since January, that's two new businesses in Vermillion.
Nice.
And we're keeping it moving. But thank you, thank you, thank Jerry, thank everyone for both the solid waste grant and for the service you provide supporting Vermillion and its growth. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor.
Nice to hear you comment and say nice things.
Can we, since they're behind you, can I get an update on that corridor study? I've seen emails going back and forth. I wasn't able to actually completely understand where we were at with that. But you have kept me in the loop, I just haven't, I can't get my arms around it.
Fair enough. The contract was recently awarded to MS Consultants, and we are actually doing our first kickoff meeting where we're going to basically lay out what we want to accomplish within the next couple of months to really begin to provide the mayor and the county that those next steps that we can do to continue to redevelop and to bring more investment to our lakefront. We've already begun to share some information with the MS Consultants, all the legwork that was done with T L C I. We are now looking to recreate the wheel. We've got good core data. We're transferring that. The first meeting this Friday will be to really set the expectation, set the guideposts, and bring us to the finish line by, ideally, I'd like to say, the end of this year have everything ready with recommendations, so the mayor and his council then can hit the ground running to a great start to next year. And we'll be bringing the mayor in shortly. I actually talked to him a little bit earlier today to let him know that we'll be out to him probably within a week or two.
Perfect. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? If not, I'll make a motion to move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second, the motion.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.